Okay. Thank you, John. So I'd like to welcome everyone to the Thursday, March 24th, 2022 Public Arts Commission Meeting. I've got a ton of notes, so if I look like I'm looking off to the side, I'm just staring at my pile of notes here, so please forgive me. John, can you take attendance and try to establish a quorum?
John, where am I? Guest is me. Why am I guest?
Okay.
Yes, I will.
Lucy, you look like you're coming in as guest, but that's okay.
Shall I change my?
John's gonna check and make sure that you're here.
There's this thing.
Lucy?
How can I put my mute?
Let's just, we've already started the meeting, so let's go ahead and let John.
You're on mute right now.
Yeah, thank you.
There we go. John, mute?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay. Chair Waldman?
This is the chair.
I'm here.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Here.
Commissioner Couture?
I'm on.
Here.
Commissioner Jan Gignan?
The community center and one is outside.
Commissioner Jan Gignan is here. And Commissioner Moore?
Yeah.
And?
I'm sorry. Those that are speaking off the record, please mute your computers, because I can't hear what's going on when there's background noise. Sorry.
And Vice Chair King is not present, but she will be here shortly.
She'll. Yes, okay. Are there any public comments on items not on the agenda? And I myself have a public comment on an item not on the agenda, but I'll check and see if there's anyone else. I'll let them go first. Okay, I hear resounding crickets, so I would like to welcome Dana.
He's the chair.
Lucy?
Turn, try turning your volume up.
Lucy, could you please mute if you're not speaking?
It's on the.
Thank you. One more time, I'd like to welcome Dana, who was appointed to our commission on Tuesday. And she will be joining us, I believe, next meeting in April after she is sworn in. Is that correct, John?
Great to be with you for the great mistake, and thanks so much.
I think John is saying yes.
Oh, come on.
Yes.
Says you.
Lucy, Lucy, please, please mute yourself. Thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and do we have any other items that are not on the agenda from the public? Nope, okay. Let's go ahead and look at the meeting minutes from our last meeting way back February 24th, 2022. I hope everybody's had a chance to read the meeting minutes. Um, I have one comment on the meeting minutes, and I don't know. John, I'll give the comment and you'll tell me if it's a relevant comment or not. My one comment is on item four, which was Midnight Stomp Series discussing it. I went back and watched part of the meeting from 9:30 2021, and there was a five to zero vote to have staff ask the artist to contact the artist and try and renew the the loan period. So I just wanted to make note of that. Does anyone want to make a motion to either accept or have another comment on the meeting minutes from the last meeting?
I'll move to accept the meeting minutes from January 27th, 2020, or sorry.
February, February.
February 20th, 2022.
February 24th.
Oh, you're right. It does say 24th.
All second.
I will do a roll call vote. Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes, please.
Commissioner Jan Gignan?
Lucy?
Lucy?
You're on mute. You can unmute. Just give a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
We'll come back. Commissioner Moore?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, motion passes. We'll call it four to zero with Commissioner Jan Gignan abstaining and Vice Chair King absent.
Okay, and then I have made an error, and John will let me know if I am still allowed to move an agenda item at this time.
To rearrange the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, you can do that.
Okay, I would like to move agenda item number six, which is discuss the Everybody is an Artist event, because I think we're going to get some really good news from that after item two, so making item six, make it the new item three. And I don't think we have to vote on that, do we? John?
No, no, you don't. Sorry.
Okay. I've just never moved an agenda item before, so I wasn't sure how we how we dot the i's and cross the t's. All right, I'm going to move on to item number two, which is receive an update from the Community Center Art Subcommittee and select entries from our Where I'm From exhibit. When we have calls for art, it's one of the really fun times for this commission, because we get to look at things either from the community or outside the community and decide what we want to display in our community. So it's usually a pretty fun time. So I'm just going to give a brief update on the Community Center Art Subcommittee's tasks that we've done before we get into looking at the art from our call for art. The first is we ordered some lettering for our Community Center Art Gallery, and thanks to John, we were able to put it up on Monday. So yay, John. He did not know when he took this job that that was one of his job tasks he was going to do. Way back when, when we were deciding on the murals that we were going to put up in the Community Center, Linda Gass, who is a well-known local artist, she presented to the Public Arts Commission and told us the story behind the murals that she wanted to develop. And it was, it was an amazing discussion. And we discussed possibly having her do a video of the presentation so they could play in the community center, so people could understand the background behind the murals. And at that time, the commission, I think we approved $5,000 to go into creating the video. It turns out, we don't actually need to buy iPads or any kind of hardware. There's a TV in one side of the community center, and we got approval from Parks and Rec to use that. So Linda is still in the process of creating a bid. She sent me an email. She's still working on it. And I told her when she has it ready, she should come and present to us. So we have a lot of newer members who are not familiar with the background on the murals. And we, I guess we'll discuss the tower after we do the call for art. And just wanted to mention that the current show that is currently up in the community center, where the thought was to go ahead and move it to the South Senior Center, and it looks like they have space and they're, we can bang nails into walls. So we'll get ahold of Parks and Rec after the fact, after we take the current show down and put the new show up. So with that, I'm preparing just a little background for the entries from Where I'm From. We have one wall in the community center. I hope everybody's gotten a chance to actually see the wall. It's in two sections. One section is 16 feet, three and a quarter inches. The other is 18 feet and three and a quarter inches. And right now, we have seven pictures hanging from the 16-foot section and eight pictures hanging in the 18-foot section for a total of 15 pieces on the wall. And with that, I hope John has enough internet that he can display the entries. So John?
I'm gonna give it a go.
Okay, let's, let's hope technology works.
Okay. Are you seeing my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
It's trying. Hang on. Good.
Yes, we can see it. Yes.
Great. So these are, and these are all in the packet, and it's in the same order that we have, that I have them here.
And we have a total of, I believe, 14 or 13 of them, John, do you know?
Um, yes, it's.
Four, five, six, seven.
I did not actually print them all out to save my printer.
Nine, 10, 11, 12. We have 12.
12, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we can, Hillary has joined us. So we can actually space them a little ways apart. Hillary, we're just starting to go through the call for art.
Okay, okay.
So we got here just in time, and I reminded everyone that we have two sections of walls. One is 16 feet, one is 18 feet. We currently have seven pieces on one side, eight on the other, for a total of 15, and we got 12 entries. So we can split things, add a little space in between. We can accept every one of the pieces, none of the pieces or some of the pieces. John, could you, without reading the name of the person who created the piece, could you read a little bit of the background that they wrote in with each piece?
Sure. So the first piece is titled San Francisco House in Blue. And the description, "Spent my first summer in San Francisco in this Victorian house, upstairs tiny room near Fell Street in the Golden Gate Park Panhandle."
So my thought is we could do a vote for each piece. And I'll, and I'll let John call for each, each piece, if that's okay, John, and then.
Sure, what, if, if I might offer some, some suggestion on how to make it a little more efficient. If we do one vote at the end, accepting the pieces, and what I might suggest on, as we go through, is see if the one who feels a piece should not be included. And then maybe have discussion that way. That might make things a little more efficient than doing a roll call vote.
That might mean we get done before 10 o'clock tonight. Okay. Can you go on to the next one, John?
Okay. The, the next one is by the same artist, and it's San Francisco, how, San Francisco Houses in Pink. Same description of this piece.
Looks like they did a little bit of needlepoint there. Okay, next one, please.
Okay. The next piece is titled American. Description is, "This is a painting that is definitely influenced by growing up in Connecticut. We received an American colonial history in every grade from elementary to high school. Many of my paintings seem to gravitate not only to New England, but also from the seemingly peaceful times of growing up in the 50s. Today, we are much more aware of the world around us. The American flags no longer represents, the American flag no longer represents what it did to me as a child of my era." And the artist is Jan Meyer. Make it a little smaller, so you can see the whole thing.
I think the chair had suggested not giving the names of the artists as we go through.
Yeah, Jan is actually well-known in the city, but yeah, let's, let's leave that out of there. But you can actually see her signature at the bottom, so.
Yeah.
Okay, John?
Okay. You want the next one?
Some of the artists have signed their pieces.
The next one is titled Golden Leaves. The description is, "Golden leaves is painted with palette knife and acrylic paint. It is inspired by the birch trees' golden leaves and reminds me of fall in Sweden, where I was born. The blue and gold color are also tribute to where I am from, both being typical colors of the crisp Scandinavian nature, and because blue, yellow and blue is the colors of the Swedish national flag."
Thank you so much. I think she has, I think I don't know.
Lucy, Lucy, if you're having a conversation off camera, could you, could you mute, please?
Yeah, sorry, sorry.
Okay. John, could you go back and?
Yep, I will.
Sorry.
For sure. Okay. Seeing it again?
I'm sorry?
Are you seeing the screen again?
Oh, it's.
Rolling ball.
It's buffering in there.
Okay, I apologize. I'm hopeful once I close this tab from the internet that it'll free up some of the bandwidth.
I got it, John. It's up on my face.
Terry has a color printer.
Courtesy of my money, I spend at Kohl Baker.
I have three printers, none of them print in color.
I think you're, I think you're the only commissioner who does.
We live in the middle of Tech Central, and I don't have a color printer.
Yeah, but wait till you see whatever, what else I'm going to do today, you'll laugh.
Maybe we should have Terry go ahead and show the next.
Yeah, I have them all printed. I have them all printed out.
Is my screen still not sharing?
It's still not sharing.
Yeah, it's still having trouble, John.
I apologize. I was working earlier and.
It happens.
Internet's decided it's done.
City staff, stand in Ms. Couture, could you show the next picture, please?
So we're done with this one?
Yes, and that was by the same artist as the last one, but.
And this one's darling.
That one is darling. Yes. And I'm going to be kind to Terry and not ask her to read the.
I got it all.
The description, because I.
I got it.
Read them in the.
I was born in Nafar Menchen, a kibbutz in central Israel, where I grew up during the 70s and 80s. Back then, children in the kibbutz were raised in a communal children's house, where they ate, bathed, slept, played, and studied with the other kids from the same age group. As a natural outcome, the principle of equality, which was a substantial part of the kibbutz communal life and ideology, children in the kibbutz received all their needs from the kibbutz. Everyone got the same share of everything. We all got the same shoes, same pajamas, same towels, same clothing, same watches and bicycles. But they didn't get the same shirts.
That is a good observation. They didn't get the same haircut either.
No, that's true. Okay. There's another cute one. So this one says, it's called Cup of Tea in Istanbul. Istanbul, Turkish tea and cement overlooking Bosporus and the infamous Maiden Tower in Istanbul. In Istanbul wrong, so that's why I'm having a tough time with it.
Istanbul.
We can correct it if we choose to hang it, and we can correct it.
Okay. Next. The dance of the, oh, called Turkish art of marbling, the dance of colors on water. The dance of vivid colors and colorful patterns creates art of marbling, which clearly represents Turkey V. In the 13th century, the first forms of ebru emerged in Central Asia and spread Anatolia through marbling, oh, through, throughout, I guess. Marbling is technically an art of decoration, which is made by passing patterns and shapes created with especially prepared paints or paper through condensed water. I think this goes this way. I gotta get my glasses on for this one. I can't read it.
Yeah, I think it did go that way.
The image, oh, it's called a Heinemann's connection to her, sorry, eh? The image often appears when I meditate, where you find yourself merging with much wider, bigger space. I truly believe that each of us is a star just landing in this world of duality. I dedicate this to ancient, modern stages such as Amin and Ramana Marasaw. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen. I didn't know I was going to read all this, so I just bone up. This one is called from L O D H I to L O D I. I have traveled from my hometown in Delhi, India to the Bay Area, USA. I remembered one morning as a teen in the garden of a historic monument, the low-hi tomb, watching the sun stream through the trees of the Gu Muhar tree, inspiring me to move on with my life and seize the future near Lodi in California. This one's called The Best of Both Worlds.
So cute.
It's so darling.
I was born in Taiwan, yet raised in the Bay Area. I love California's beaches, Taiwanese food and butterflies. I drew the monarch butterfly of California and the purple crow butterfly of Taiwan. Since they're special migration butterflies, I learn about the best of both worlds of where I'm from.
So cute.
I like the boba tea.
Yeah. This one's appropriate. It says, "A sunny day in Grant Park with Monte. I am five years old. My favorite activity is running 5Ks with Monte, a tiger from my school, Montclair Elementary School."
Oh, yeah.
Who knew Montclair had a tiger?
Yeah, that's our mascot.
Genitive, yeah.
I didn't know we were zoned for tigers.
That's it. That's all of them.
All right. So if I may speak for Hillary, and she can correct me if I'm wrong. Hillary was the one who came up with the idea for this show, or the, and I think we got a wide variety of ages and backgrounds and ideas of what the theme was. So I think that's really fantastic. I'm gonna put it out there that we accept all of them, and unless there's someone, there's one that somebody feels is not appropriate, I'll call on Janet.
So, thank you, Chairman Waldman. So I just looked at these in terms of what the assignment was, Where I'm From, and there were two that I didn't think met the assignment. The one was, the first was the one about meditation. I'll show you this one. I don't know if you can see that. No, can't see it. Okay, well, sorry. The meditation, and then the second one with the, with beautiful, but the answer, the vivid colors from Turkey. I mean, it's more about Turkish art. I mean, it's not offensive, but I, I just thought both of those did not meet the objective. Everything else I thought was great.
Well, I would say the first one did, and we did ask people, it can be metaphorically, it can be cosmically. It doesn't have to be a literal interpretation. So for me, I kind of like that there is that one that's not literal. It's very abstract. So I kind of like that one. I agree about the Turkish papers, but I'm kind of like, well.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but yeah, let's talk to other people, though, about those two.
Being the devil's advocate, English may not be her first language, and so she may come from Taiwan or China or something, and I know they do meditate a lot, so, you know, maybe the explanation wasn't so good. Because she did write it. She didn't type it, so I don't know. I kind of like it, but I'm, I'm for all of them, just because I think art is so personal. Everybody's different about art.
And Janet, I agree with you that some of the interpretations might be different from how I would have interpreted the assignment. I'll call it an assignment or the, the cue, but I think that's what we wanted, is we wanted to see everybody's interpretation.
That makes perfect sense to me. I just was, you know, I'm new and was going by the literal words of the assignment. So it makes perfect sense to accept all of them.
Okay.
The other thing I think is, as we get better at this, asking the public to do things, I think we can be more critical, but I think this is our first shot at it. And if we don't have a lot of pictures, and we don't accept somebody, I think I mean, if we would have had 33 of them, then we would have had a tougher time. That's just kind of my feeling.
Then you can kind of get down to how close did they adhere to the theme or the call of the show. I agree with that, but we don't, we have the room. I think it does show the diversity of our community and the diversity of what, what Where I'm From means. And to some people, that does mean, you know, that, so.
And I think also, besides the diversity in the community, it shows diversity in art and means of expression, that you can express yourself, and it's beautiful. We have all kinds of expressions. So I think, I think we have, we're, I think we're very fortunate. We got these different kinds of expressions.
And, and piggybacking off what Hillary said, when we originally envisioned the Community Center Art Gallery, we did not know that we would have a community center that was not being widely used by the time we had our first real call for art from the community. So getting the word out was tough, and also it's hard to convince people, put your artwork up in somewhere where not a lot of people may see it, but I believe the community center is going to be more utilized as we go forward. So I think we will hopefully get to the point where we have 33 or 40 entries, and we have to be a little more critical.
Where will we publicize this art show? Where will it be publicized?
Well, that's up to the subcommittee, in your part of the subcommittee, so we'll have to come up with a plan. Probably we'll ask the town crier and ask the city to, you know, and the city manager's weekly update to send information out to the public.
We'll put it on the social media account we don't have, so.
Exactly.
I'm also wondering.
Very good.
I'm also wondering if we could have, you know, make a poster and have it in different parts of the city or in restaurants or.
Well, that would be, that would be a conversation for the subcommittee, so we'd probably go ahead and table that for now and have the subcommittee.
Okay. Just an idea.
Let's go ahead and take a vote.
I move that we accept all the art.
I second. Okay.
John, you want to take a vote? John?
Yes. Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Gignan?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
And Chair Waldman?
Yes, and go ahead, John.
Motion passes unanimously.
So the subcommittee will, I'll send out an email and we'll figure out. John, do you want to send email to everybody who submitted an entry? Make sure that everything is already framed and ask them to get it to us, get it to the community center by, let's say, April 1st is a Friday, if I remember, maybe April 4th, and then we'll figure out hanging and getting the labels, and the subcommittee will take that offline.
Right.
Okay. Let's go on to agenda item now, number three.
Before, before we move off of item two, yeah. So as indicated in the staff report, I did reach out to the artist about modifying the term of the loan period. Because if you'll remember, we had, you know, we were trying to schedule the installation and ended up cutting off about five or six months of the two-year loan period. The artist is very interested in, or is very willing to modify it so that it is there for the full two years. Out of curiosity, I asked what a purchase price might be. And as indicated in the staff report, he's willing to sell it to the city for 15,000 plus tax. That is less than what he would charge normally for this, for the similar type of piece.
This is for Midnight Stomp, correct?
No, this is. No, this is for the tower, the T2, the, the one in front of the community center.
Yeah, okay, sorry.
Do we know if, well, since we have it on loan for, I think it's another year and a half-ish, we may not want to just spend the 15,000 right now. Do, John, do you feel that he would be willing to let it, the loan period finish with the hope that we would buy it? Or does he seem to want to close the sale as soon as possible?
I think the former. I don't, I did not get the, the sense that he's, you know, anxious to close a sale or anything like that. Of course, you know, as not being an artist, I can't speak for artists, but I think most artists are often interested in selling quicker. But I did not get that sense from him.
Okay.
Is I, I would be inclined to go ahead and, and buy it now. Are you just not wanting to spend the money now? The committee, you don't want the committee to spend the money now if we can put it off? I mean, what if he raises price?
Yeah, he could optionally raise the price or at the end of the loan, say, I'm coming and taking it back. You didn't, you know, someone else bought it, so.
I'm with Hillary. I think that piece is very nice where it is, and I think it's a good statement of, you know, Los Altos nature. And I think it's a beautiful piece. So I, you know, that's kind of how I feel about it.
Do, is in a situation like this, do we ever, you know, want to know what the public thinks of it before we make a purchase?
We could.
I mean, our job is to advise.
Put it on the agenda for next month and ask for the public's input.
You're gonna, get into a conversation about what does public art cost? And what is a, because a lot of people may not realize that's a pretty good price for a large sculpture. Some people might, I'm not gonna spend that much money. Whereas that's a very typical price for, I think that's right, my, a very typical price. So if we, if we do take out of the public, I think you may just have to be, they may say, no, it's too much. And then why are we spending any money on public art? So I don't know. I'm a little wary of that. I mean, our job as the council is to advise on this. That's kind of our role and.
And it is already there, so.
Well, and the metal alone is probably 10K.
John, if, if we asked, I don't think we can take a vote to actually make a purchase because it's not on the agenda, could we put it on the agenda for the next meeting?
Yeah, and, and one of the things I was going to actually suggest is later on in the, the meeting today, we're going to talk about potential recommendations for next year's budget. And that may be something that we want to include in that recommendation. And so I was, I would suggest if, if there is interest in discussing, perhaps we discuss as part of that item, whether to include it or not, and see sort of how the discussion goes from there.
Okay.
Good.
I will add one other little piece, though I don't know that I need to. I did ask the director of our recreation department, what she thought about the city potentially purchasing it, and she is supportive of that idea.
Thank you. And I'd asked you to do that and I'm glad she, when it was installed, she joked that she would love for us to buy it, but I'm glad you double checked. Okay, we're going to take what was item six and we're going to make it item three now. Our community art engagement project, everybody is an artist. Before we start discussing it, are there any public comments? Resounding silence. I'm going to let the subcommittee take it away. I think they've got some really good news and I look forward to hearing about it.
Hillary, do you want to?
Yeah, I'm ready to talk. Do we have any slides to?
Yeah.
Put up some slides all over.
Yep, I, I'm, I'm working on getting it called up right now.
So the event took place last Saturday at the community center. This is obviously, as everyone knows, something that's been in the works for a while. We'd hoped to do it earlier. We got pushed back. Initially, we had kind of a low sign up, but the subcommittee really put their nose to the grindstone and ended up basically having a sold out event. They had, I think, 25 participants of all ages. There was even a, a second date. There was a mother-daughter pairing, I believe, and some younger folks as well. So it just, and it also at least two city council members, correct, or three?
Three. By the way, I can present the slides. John, do you want me to give it a shot?
Sure, I was just gonna try, but if you want to.
Whatever you want is fine. Just let me know. I can be a backup.
So a great turnout. There we go. It's coming. A great turnout and it sounds like a great time. Jenna put together some wonderful food and snacks, which everybody enjoyed. Just a really successful event, so hats off to Jenna and Janet. They actually had to give up their painting spots so people could paint. And everybody had a great time and we got great feedback, which I'll let one of the other subcommittee members talk about. Thinking, go to the next slide.
Okay, you are seeing the slides?
Yep.
Yes.
Excellent.
Want to go to the next one? There's everybody with their paintings. There's some more pictures of it and there's Jenna's beautiful food.
Janet, did you?
How long did the event actually go for?
Um, we had a two-hour time slot, but I mean, no one was rushing to leave. You know, they very casually left, probably a little even after three. We had the space from one to three and it was just a perfect afternoon. It was raining, so it was very cozy. I think people felt really comfortable. They were chatting. What else was really neat is that it's a tutorial, but everyone took creative license to create their own interpretation. Some people painted in like their dog. Other people changed the landscape a little bit. So overall, I think everyone had a lot of fun and really enjoyed it. And it was actually a multi-generational, there were three generations that came. There was a grandmother, her daughter, her daughter, and that was really neat to see. And then there were some teenagers, some seniors, and it was a great experience.
Did you quiz the applicants on how they heard about it?
We did, yeah.
We'll talk about that. You want to go to the next slide, John?
The only thing I'll add for this, that slide before is that, and if you look at the painting on the bottom, if you look at the bottom right, it's the yellow or, or sorry, yellow and blue heart. Yeah, one of the painters wanted to auction that off. And, and I think that this may have been the first time that this art room has been used, but it's a fantastic venue. So we can go to the next slide. So to answer Terry's question, we did conduct a survey. And I mean, I've done surveys like this before. This was kind of mind blowing. 23 of the 25 painters responded that they strongly agree that they had a nice time. They enjoyed their experience. Next slide. You, you'll recall back in December that this was kind of the goal of the event, to basically facilitate a community art engagement activity that promoted visual art appreciation, inspired Los Altos residents and showed everyone that they could be an artist and enjoy a new community center. And again, 100% of the 23 people who filled out the survey strongly agree that we met that goal. Next slide. And then of course, everybody wanted, wants to see more of these types of community art engagement events. And, and Jenna and I were there and there were three city council members there and they kept hearing from everybody that they want more of this stuff, which was very gratifying. And then next slide, please. And then here are some of the suggestions that we received. Janet, do you want to talk about this?
Sure. Let's see, so a couple of things. People really liked the painting. So we suggested, we threw out the idea of having like an evening painting and maybe we could look into getting a liquor license, so we could do like a wine and painting sort of thing. I don't know. That's completely off limits. But people were very interested in it, including one council member. I won't name names. And we were also talking about having an event for kids, maybe at Grant Park, which involves painting river rocks that they can then bring home and put in the gardens. And let's see, what else? Yeah. The one thing that I did want to bring attention to, and I don't know if there's any way that we can improve on this, but was the registration. I know that the method was a little bit convoluted. It was a little, I mean, I even struggled with it a little bit. I, I wanted to see what it would be like if I just searched for the event in Google and then went through that process. And so I don't know if there's any room for improving that, but I think that was really the only negative feedback that I received. And, you know, it wasn't that strong. People, it, it obviously didn't deter people enough. They came and dropped.
And, and that might be feedback for Park and Rec if we do this again or some, you know, if we need their, to piggyback off their registration system.
Okay, it's just that it was under like, there were so many different like subheadings that it was, it wasn't like very clearly one of the highlighted events. And it also, I don't think it appeared on our website as one of the events. So maybe next time we'll make sure it gets on there.
Okay.
Next slide. And to answer Terry's question, so we did a full court press on Nextdoor and that, as you can see from the responses, is probably where most people heard about this, although they also heard from the flyers that Jenna and Hillary posted all over town. And so, so it worked well. And we actually were able to get a mention in the city manager's weekly, which was fantastic. And, and the bottom line is that, you know, we, we oversold the event, so it was great. Next slide. So this is kind of an estimate. John and I are still working together on the final, the final numbers, but this is, gives you a rough idea of what the cost was. We, we charge people $15 and it's normally $38. I mean, so maybe that's because of the popularity. Maybe if we do this again, we can charge more money. But, but it shows you that it's relatively pretty and expensive to do this and really good thing for the buck. Next slide.
Oh, just to, sorry, can I piggyback off that really quickly? Janet, I wanted to mention to you that Janet and I donated everything outside of what was provided by the, the artist. So, I mean, Janet brought cleaning supplies and, and we brought napkins and tablecloths and then I provided the food, so that doesn't include it in that.
And I think if, if we do this again, we should budget for that, so, so it's not out of.
I agree.
Okay, okay. I mean, I was happy to donate, but that's fine.
I mean, they were the best appetizers I've ever seen, so Jenna's an entertainer. Really great. People, in fact, somebody arrived and they thought that we were painting her appetizers.
Food is my love language, so.
Yeah. I was like, no, that's, that's for you to eat. Next step. Or next slide. So, so I guess we, we're, we want to know if you want the subcommittee to go back and like take the feedback that we had gotten, the, the learning experiences that we pulled out of this and maybe come back to you with a proposal. Should we, what should we do if anything? And, you know, just come back to you further. So that's, that's their question to you. And before we go to that question, I wanted to go to the last slide, which is to just thank everybody. We could not have done this without John, who was behind the scenes, dealing with me, dealing with Paint the Town. I mean, fantastic. I mean, without, there was no budget, there was no money. We would not have done this. Casey Richardson gave up her Saturday to handle the registrations. And then Sonia, I think I spelled her name wrong, so sorry about that. She, she got us into the city manager's weekly, which was of course, of course, great. And then the residents who are super positive and supportive. So that's all I have to say. Jenna or Hillary, anything you want to add?
No, I just, I think it went off even better than we anticipated. I'm just so happy that it did because we were a little worried at first and it was great.
And I'll speak as someone who wasn't there. I think it would be awesome to have the subcommittee come back, maybe at the next meeting, if that's appropriate, and with a plan or an idea of, you know, how often to do this or maybe do one for just kids or one for this or one for that. It seems like there, there's definitely need. My only caveat is, and maybe John can speak to this or tell me it's not a caveat, is just to make sure we don't step on the toes of Parks and Rec that, because they do offer classes.
Well, I, I get a little, it's funny to me because I live near Rancho Shopping Center and Wine and Design is right there. And maybe it's because we offered it at such a lower cost, but it's, it's fascinating to me that we got this turnout and this positive feedback and there's a place that offers it every night, you know, within, you know, shouting distance. And I, I worry about stepping on their toes too. But I do think this has a lot of ideas, so.
You know what I found really interesting though? So I was responsible for posting flyers at Rancho and I put them in vacant, I ran it by the property manager, but I put them in vacant spaces and dronicos and whichever tenants had boards in their space. But I noticed that Wine and Design had one of our flyers in their window and I didn't put it there. I thought that was really neat. Yeah.
Maybe we use them next time if we do this again, but, but it's interesting. But I do think we can have, I mean, the rock, the stone idea is a good one, so we can, we can come back. I think doing something in South Los Altos is a good idea too.
And just to remind everyone, I had reached out to Wine and Design several times and I got added to their, their advertising list, but I never got a response from them. So I did try to reach out to someone local to, and never heard back from them.
Well, that's a lesson in itself too, so.
And, and then one warning to the subcommittee is like, if you think that we should do it once a quarter, once a month, once a week, remember we're just volunteers and, and requires work on, on all of our parts. So, you know, you don't want to do it too often and burn yourself out.
Agreed. Very good point.
Okay, I, I think our subcommittee is going to go off. It's okay for me to say that I think that's the right direction. If anybody has a comment otherwise, please speak up. But I, I think it's, it's all goodness and definitely. If, John, if you could make an agenda item on the, for the next agenda that the subcommittee is going to come back with hopefully some really awesome ideas?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. And again, congratulations. Yay. Okay, on to midnight discussion, discussing the status of Midnight Stomp. Before we discuss it, does the public have any comments about Midnight Stomp? Going once, going twice? Stomp that one out. John, do you have an update on Midnight?
Yeah, I, I actually do. So I, I, I had reached out to the artist based on the direction at the last meeting to see about extending the loan period and had a conversation with the artist's manager about it. They are interested. They did have some questions, namely if there is an additional stipend for extending the loan period. One of the questions or reasoning behind it was the, the, the pieces have been in the city since 2014. They received the original stipend, but haven't received one since. And so wondering if that was an option. They, her, the manager also mentioned potentially selling the pieces to the city. This had come up actually a few years ago, prior to any of the public art funds coming in. The pieces sell for $15,000 each. They are willing to sell all three for $30,000. So a discount of what would essentially be one of the pieces for free. They're also willing to do a sort of a pay over, you know, three or four years. So, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be an upfront cost. But that is the conversation. The other, the other item that was, that she brought up was apparently somebody had reached out to her last year and asked if we decide, you know, if they stayed, if we decided to move them to another location, would that be okay with them? And they are okay with that. And I think that is all that I have to report.
So that would have been Nancy. I know she reached out to manager, the, the artist manager. And I think at that time was also quoted either, either 30 or 35,000. And, um, I think at that time was also quoted either, either thirty or thirty-five thousand for the two, two for three essentially, but um, I know I'll, I'll say I, I love the pieces. I don't think they're in the best spot. And I, I would not be opposed to us buying them. Um, I know, um, the previous configuration of the commission had said, no second stipends. That was our general rule. And Hillary is nodding her head. Um, and I'm hesitant to give another stipend because that sets a precedent. But I'm, I'm all ears if anyone has an opinion.
I mean, I kind of like them. I, I, I like them. I think, I actually think they're in a good spot. Um, and I, because if we took them out, then they're, that we'd have that big kind of mass of Safeway and, and I feel like it softens that and it kind of makes that area less, um, canyon-y, if that makes sense. I don't, I mean, I heard you on, uh, thirty, whether thirty K is the appropriate number. I, I don't know. Um.
She's a, a, a known artist and she has pieces at Stanford and, and other places as well. Um, I, um, if John had better internet access, he could probably bring up the web, her website. Um, I'm, I'm interested in possibly buying the pieces and even though the, the, um, pay an installment plan sounds even better.
I would like, I would say if we buy them, do it on the installment plan, I think would go down more easily. So.
Yeah, maybe like ten K for over three years or, or something. That might be reasonable.
They do seem like a fixture down there now. I mean, it's hard to imagine that spot without them. And it kind of, in some ways, it kind of mirrors to me all the teens that hang out there.
I, I think you have a really good point that even though I feel like they, they might be showcased better elsewhere. That whole like look straight through the parking lot. It does break up that section of town. I know people who walk that section of town like them there. So, um, what would we like to tell John to tell the artist? I mean, we're not probably interested in another stipend. Um, I don't know how willing the artist would be to renew it for two years without a promise of, of possible purchase.
Well, do we want to vote on it if we want to buy it or then do the installment plan? Should we make a motion then or?
John, would that be okay at this time?
If we're going to do it, could we do it over five years instead of three years?
That's a good move, Terry.
Can we put it off? I mean, especially if we're going to try to buy that other piece, the community centerpiece.
Right.
Yeah. Can we also put, um, in writing like an option, um, in the renewal so that we lock down the price? You know, an option to, to purchase, but what was it thirty?
Over five years.
Yeah.
I think we should just do a, 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 a purchased op, a, a contract of sale, pay, you know, maybe, um,
let's say, let's say we get it for twenty-five thousand, five thousand dollars a year. Try it and see what happens. The worst thing he can do is say no, right?
John, do you think the artist might budge and go a little bit lower?
I don't know. Um, she might.
Her, her website and see what her other prices have been.
But she might also say, you know, we've already come down fifteen thousand dollars.
Has she factored in depreciation?
Yeah, I mean.
I don't know the answer to that.
Well, maybe.
But what I was going to suggest.
Oh, I, I believe she's got, this is, th- there's other versions of this elsewhere. So she could be basing the price on that. We, we haven't done our, our homework yet, so we don't know.
Are they in pretty good shape? I'm looking at pictures of them online. I haven't really seen them very much up close.
Yeah, they're in pretty good shape. I, I did that inspection. They're, they, they just need a good cleaning. That's it.
I, I kind of like Terry's idea. Why not kind of put that out to her and say twenty-five over five years, we're publicly commissioned, yada, yada. And she comes back and says, no, say, okay, we'll do it for thirty, three years.
No, we could, he could say, okay, if you won't, then I gotta go back to the commission again.
Okay. And you gotta come get your truck and come pick it up.
They gotta go to us again, right?
Let's try and get, um.
Somebody offered me twenty-five as opposed to thirty for five years. I'd go, sold.
And she doesn't have to come and, and take away.
She's got to come and get them and then she's got to go find another place for them and she's not on the meeting. So.
Um, I, I will say that, that as an artist, a lot of times when people underbid, i- it, it can come back as insulting, but, um, why not try? Because we've already got them. It'd be one less, one less trip.
Monica, Chair, Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Uh, if we, um, I mean, if we said, you know, we love the pieces, but we're really budget minded and, you know, we've got a lot of, you know, um, other sculptures we have to worry about and, and, but we love your work.
I wouldn't say you're, I wouldn't say you have other sculptures you have to worry about. I would just say we're budget minded and we have a city council that has a lot of expenses coming up and we're very cognizant of that.
I, I agree. I agree. Good point.
Does anybody want to make a motion for midnight stomp?
I'll make a motion that we go back and talk to, that John Maginot goes back and talks to the artist and asks if we can purchase the midnight stomp series, um, for twenty-five thousand dollars. And the contract to sales, we give him five per five thousand dollars now. And then another five thousand dollars in two thousand three, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six. Is that right?
I second that motion.
Sold.
Congratulations, Hillary. John, do you want to take a vote?
Yep. Uh, Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Janjigian?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Um, Chair Anita Ender here. I don't know who has noise on in their back, in the background. Um, I'm guessing it's, um, Commissioner Janjigian. But there's breakthrough noise. It's quite distracting and it, it sounds sometimes like talking, sometimes like a little bit of music.
There we go. Thank you.
Yeah, sorry.
One, one option is for everybody to keep muted unless you're going to speak. But that assumes that you know how to talent, you're talented at muting and unmuting yourselves. And that's takes, I've learned over time, a little bit of practice.
Let, let me ask, sorry, uh, uh, I'm going to ask one more question, uh, about midnight stomp. And I don't mean to, diminish the, the mute and unmute, um, conversation. Um, John, are, are we as a commission allowed to vote and on something like this and make the purchase? Or does it have to go through city council?
It would go to the, through the city council.
Okay. So if you come back to us next month and say the artist is, is willing to do that, then it gets on to the city council's, um, agenda and they vote on it, correct?
Yes. And as we'll, as we'll talk, when we, uh, get to the budget item, budget recommendation item. Um, of course, we would include this as part of the recommendation, um, as well if, um, the, the T2 is recommended to be purchased. Um, same thing. It would go to the city council uh, as part of the budget, but then also a separate item actually approving the purchase of the piece.
And, and just for reference, any piece that our commission wants to purchase, we need to go through city council or is there a, um, I think, is there a dollar limit where it doesn't have to go to city council? I think.
I would, I would have to double check, but I think any per piece that the city is going to purchase would have to be approved by the city council.
Okay. Cause I know mother and was did not get.
I think there's a specific, John, I think there's a specific limit because it's public art. My, my recollection is that it's anything over ten thousand, but it would be well to check that exact policy. But I think there's a specific policy that involves public art.
Yep. And that was, that was a doc, or that was, uh, those, those policies were updated, um, right before I resumed my role as liaison. And so I will admit that I have not fully memorized them yet. Working on it.
Okay. And, and you'll let us know at the next meeting. And I, I wanted to ask because we have a lot of new members too, who I want them to know that just because we voted to purchase it, if the artist comes back and say, says yes, that there's still one more step to go. Okay. Let's go on to our next agenda item. Congratulations, everyone. I think we might have made a purchase. Pending though. Um, okay. Discuss the status and disposition of sculptures loaned to the city. So this is not purchases. These are loans. Before we go into it, are any comments from the public? One, two, three, no. Um, a comment, um, about the matrix that John sent out. Uh, Allegria is on there and Allegria is pending, uh, being donated to the city. So just wanted to, to make note of that. Do we have a date for, uh, it being on the city council agenda?
April twelfth.
April twelfth, okay. So everybody, hopefully, um, it will just be on the consent calendar. It was on the consent calendar for this past Tuesday, but it got pulled. So.
And that, and that was entirely, uh, on me.
Okay.
It was, I, I got my wires crossed up and, uh, it did not make the agenda the last Tuesday.
Okay. But it will be next meeting.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right. Um, we have a, a number, sorry. Oh, we have a number of sculptures that, um, the expiration date of the loans has come and gone, including, there was a bunch of them on May eighth. Midnight Stomp, I'm also going to put a little dot next to because that may be pending. Um, and the question is on some of these, do, uh, do we want to contact the artist? Has John contacted the artist? And or do we want to ask the artist to come and get them?
Uh, Chair Waldman, prior to that conversation, can I comment on one of the, the pieces? Um, the sculpture titled Bird, which is at Lincoln Park. Um, the artist actually reached out to me, um, and indicated, um, let me call it up really quick. He, uh, is interested in, uh, doing some maintenance on it, um, repairs and, and fixing it up. Um, what he indicated though, was that he would need to take it, uh, back to his workshop. Um, he, independent of myself, uh, suggested replacing it with another piece that he has. Um, that I can call up really, really quickly. Um, I think because it's not on the agenda, we couldn't make a decision, but we could, um, if there is interest, uh, put it on the agenda for the next meeting. I could let him know that we're going to do that. This is the piece that he is proposing. They call it come up?
It's loading.
It's, it's coming.
It's loading. Okay.
Give it some time.
The anticipation is killing us.
Yeah, there you go.
I'll show everyone that what we, what it currently is.
Yep. Thanks, Joe.
You're welcome. For perspective.
So he would put this in temporarily and then I guess swap it back out when the other one is fixed?
Um, well, I mean, that would be something that we could talk about.
It's very different.
That is very, very different.
We always worry about those sharp angles.
Yeah, I'm afraid to whack themselves on them.
I don't love that bottom angle. I could see my son getting hurt.
And it's Lincoln Park too. So, yeah.
Well, this is one that's up for renewal or, 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 so, I mean.
John, did he indicate, he said he needed repairs. Did he indicate like what needed repairs and for how long he would need the piece?
Um, he did not say. Um, he, he just says it needs some work. I'd like to bring it back here at some point to do that. I could trade it out for another piece if you like. And then um.
Terry, are you looking at your?
My notes. Yes, my notes say needs cleaning and maybe some metal polishing. So he probably knows more about it than me. But if it needs metal polishing, it might be that that paint, that metal is like deteriorating or something. That's what I put down because I don't really know.
But the, but to get back, the main point is the loan term is expiring, right? So we really need to make a decision. Do we want to keep that piece or let it go on? And I, I think I'm like, if he's going to take it, we just say, you know, the loan term is expired. Thank you. Look out, keep an eye out for our calls for art. I don't, I don't really like the new piece and I think we just kind of let that one go.
Would you be willing to let, uh, let him take, renew for two years, take the piece, spend a month or two cleaning it up? If that's all it takes and put it back?
Are we going to pay him a stipend or just take it?
No stipend. No, I would not pay him a stipend.
Well, yeah, I, I guess we could. I mean, I think we could find other things to put there, but it's a nice, I don't, I don't mind the piece. Yeah. I'm kind of neutral on that. I don't, it's, I don't love it, but I don't, you know, not mad at it. So I do not like the other piece he's suggesting.
Yeah. The problem with the other pieces at a park, I think it's just unsafe.
Yeah, which we, we need, we always keep in mind. So.
I like it, but I don't like the sharp edges, especially.
And it looks like on the bottom, people are going to put their feet on there and trying to climb it too. It invites, um, that it could possibly invite dangerous behavior. So.
Yeah, I guess I would say yes. Either he takes it and we kind of wrap up that loan or if he said, or if we, or we say, we will take bird back, but we do not want the other piece. We are, we are concerned about safety issues for residents. So. And safety of the sculpture, frankly. Yeah. That's where I would be, but definitely welcome other viewpoints.
I, I, I concur.
I do too.
Yeah, yeah.
Hillary, do you?
Yeah, I'll make a call for art or call, what am I making a call for? A motion. I'm making a motion that we tell the artist either we would like to have bird back after cleaning. We'll be happy to renew the loan without stipend for two years. Um, if he does not like those terms, we will with gratitude wrap up this loan and welcome him to future calls for art.
I second the motion.
John?
Okay, just give me a, just a, a thirty seconds. Sorry. Trying to, trying to take the notes.
But you're not saying anything about the one he wants to give? The sharp edged one?
We, we're going to say it's not, not appropriate for that location and we are going to take a, take a grateful pass on that.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just let him know that, you know, we, we'd love to have bird back. Well, if the motion passes, we'd love to have bird back, um, for another two years with no stipend. Um, and i- if not, then he can look out for other calls for art. Um, who was the second on the, I'm sorry?
Terry.
I think it's Terry, right? Okay.
Yep.
Okay. Um, Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Janjigian?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
And Commissioner Corrigan? Janet, you were on mute.
Yes, apologies.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right. John, do you have any news about any of the others that have expired, including Jasper Priestess?
I do not have any news about, um, the, the remaining. I will say of, um, Jasper Priestess, Arches, Dragonfly and Pax Nova. Generally, the artists for the last three, uh, Arches, Dragonfly, Pax Nova, they're usually fairly responsive. Um, I will say the artist for Jasper Priestess, I've reached out to him several times and, uh, have never heard back from him. Um, I do believe at perhaps the last meeting or the meeting before, the commission did say regarding Dragonfly. Um, we were going to let that loan expire and have the artist come, uh, uh, collect the piece. Um, so that would then leave Jasper. So that would then leave Jasper Priestess, Arches and Pax Nova.
How do people feel about asking all of those artists or some of those artists to come come get their pieces?
Dragonfly is one in particular that I I. I think it might be better suited somewhere else, so I'm I'm open to that being taken. It's just hard to see. Yeah, it's hard to see in the trees now. I don't know if it's overgrown. It's at Rosita Park.
You can't see it at all.
Yeah.
If if there was some maintenance on the garden around it, would that help?
I don't know. What do you think, Terry? I think it was like there it was a tree.
It look, the problem is there's too many trees around it now. They've all grown up. And it just gets lost in the trees. It's lost already and the trees aren't even butted right now.
When it was first installed, that was prior to really any growth. It was the the park had just been redone, the landscaping just barely put in. And so it was very clear and open then, but now the the trees and remaining landscape have grown up around it.
Yeah. Two thousand and three, right? It was installed?
I think thirteen.
Yeah, I mean, that was nine years ago.
I like it. I just it, I mean, I I've said to people, do you like the Dragonfly at Rosita? And they don't even know it's there.
Yeah.
And I live here, so.
So if by chance the artist didn't want to come and pick it up and wanted to donate it to the city. It sounds like people would not be opposed and they would want to move it.
Oh, I'd love to move it somewhere.
Yeah, I think it's cute.
Like Grant Park.
Is it in pretty good shape, Terry? I'm zooming.
Let me look. Uh, I think it is in good shape. I remember.
I thought it was not in great shape. I thought you looked at it and it was not in.
Well, it needs cleaning, but hang on, let me look at my list. Guys, you're so annoying.
I'm looking at the edge here and they look a little like tattered, but I don't.
Yeah, it needs cleaning.
Okay.
It needs a deep cleaning.
Okay.
Okay.
So from what I'm hearing, we have one, two, three, four that have expired. I don't hear, well, I don't hear a resounding, we need to buy these. If they wanted, don't.
Sorry, I didn't mean.
So go on, Jenna.
Do you mind repeating again, aside from Jasper Jasper Priestess and the Dragonfly? What were the what were the other two that were expiring?
So we've got Arches, we've got Dragonfly and Pax Nova.
And I like Pax Nova where it is. I think it fits well there. That'd be one where I'd be willing to reach out, reach out to the artist and say, would you mind extending? Arches, I think, I've also gets lost and he has a lot of work. He always submits for calls for art, so he'll come back again. Jasper Priestess, it needs some work, so I don't think it'd be. Yeah, what was that? Not, oh, I see.
Least favorite ones.
Yeah, I like Pax Nova would be the one I'd I'd be have. Yeah, and I and I know that we're having the dog park come there, but I think we realized that's not going to be in the dog park area, so.
Okay. Um, does someone want to make a motion that John reach out to the artist for Pax Nova and ask if they want to extend the loan?
I make a motion that John, as you know, reach out to the artist of Pax Nova. And extend the loan for two years sans stipend, without stipend.
I'll second that motion.
John?
Okay, Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Gigian?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
And Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
All right, Jasper Priestess, which John has mentioned a little bit earlier, that he's reached out to the artist numerous times. And not gotten a response. Um, do we want to ask John, do we feel like we should ask John to reach out one more time? And tell the artist that we're possibly going to look into decommissioning it if we don't hear anything?
I mean, I think if he's reached out, maybe just say we are going to be decommissioning it if we don't hear, I mean.
What does it mean? You decommission it because, I mean, I kind of like it, actually. I may be the only one on the commission who does, so.
He's in Los Angeles, John?
I do not know. When he first installed it, he was based, I think, out of Berkeley, but he may have subsequently moved down there.
You have his number, three, one, zero, eight, nine, six, eight, six, two, one.
Okay. Yeah, I can I can reach out to him.
Three, one, zero, eight, nine, six.
Yeah, Terry will get a hold of him. Don't worry about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, she'll find out.
Well, the.
This thing called the internet.
The question is, um. Uh, I know we've had trouble getting hold of him in the past.
Yeah, just because you've got a number doesn't mean that you answered it's still working.
Um, there's also the question of, and I've brought this up several months ago. When we had a different configuration of the commission that once the loan is expired. I assume the city takes responsibility for insuring the pieces, just in case somebody climbs it and falls off.
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
No. Uh, just because a loan agreement expires, the artist is still responsible. For the piece, I think the loan agreement says that the city is not going to provide any insurance for it.
Okay.
And with public art, there is. There are protections should someone climb on it and fall. Because public art is not meant to be climbed on, they're assuming the risk and liability themselves. So just because the, I guess it's a long-winded way of saying, just because the loan expires does not necessarily mean. That the city is liable or on the hook for anything that may happen.
Okay.
Monica, I'm I'm with Janet. I don't, I like this. I don't mind it. I'm just curious, is there is there more to it? Is there, is it just personal preference or has it been, has there been an issue with this?
There's been no issues, just personal preference of mine.
Okay. Okay.
Why don't why don't we go around and it's just straw poll whether people like it or not? I mean, before we kind of are getting rid of it, so. Is that okay to do, you know?
Perfectly fine. You want to take the first vote, Hillary?
Yeah, I'm pretty neutral on it. I don't, it doesn't, I'm kind of either way on it. It doesn't, I don't, it's not my favorite. I don't hate it though. I'm kind of, I can go either way, so I can be the deciding, so. Let's see, Jenna, you want to say your, you like it?
Um. Yeah, it it doesn't bother me.
Okay. Yeah, Monica's a no. Janet, where do you stand on Jasper Priestess?
I kind of like it.
Okay. Terry?
I also kind of like it.
Okay. Lucy?
Yeah, I think it's okay.
Okay. All right, so we're more now on, well, we haven't heard from, so we don't really need to do anything, or do we?
For Jasper Priestess?
Yeah.
Well, if if the commission likes, I can reach out to him and see if he'll extend for another two years and see if I can't get a hold of him.
I think you should. I think we we should dot the i's and cross the t's.
And that's one I think also needed a little bit of work and we wanted to figure out how to work on it or what to do. There were some, maybe some decay, I think, in kind of some parts of it that we had some concerns about.
Terry's looking at her her matrix.
Yeah, the bottom ten inches need some paint.
Okay.
Or coating, whatever.
Could you?
Sorry, you two two were speaking at the same time. What was the question?
And so it, the bottom of it needs paint and if he if he wants, if he is agreeable to just keeping it. If he wants to advise on what kind of paint that might be, that would be helpful to the lifespan of the art.
Okay.
All right, so John will reach out. Arches, as Hillary mentioned, the artist, I believe, has a number of pieces already in the city. The loans, it's almost two years since the loan expired. Should we do a straw poll and and see how people feel about that particular piece?
Yeah.
All right, I'm gonna, I'll I'll go first. I'm I'm neutral on the piece and I'll pass it off. I'm looking at my my Hollywood squares here. I'll pass it off to Jenna, who's next under me.
Which piece is this?
This is Arches, on state and second.
Okay, I'll see if I can pull up a picture.
Um, it personally does not speak to me, so I'm fine with it going.
I also am fine with it going.
I'm fine with it going.
Okay. Either way. No problem.
Neutral, Janet?
I'm I'm fine with it going too. I think we could find something better. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for showing it.
John, could you, could you reach out to the artist and see, tell them that we'd like them to?
Yep.
Come and get it?
Yep.
Okay, Pax Nova, I think it was Jenna who brought up the picture last time. Can you quickly bring us bring us up the picture?
So Pax Nova, you you guys already voted to extend it for two years?
Sorry, it confused that Dragonfly. Let's look at Dragon.
Did we just talk about Dragonfly?
We did, okay, I got.
I think we're done.
But I don't think, I don't think there was a a conclusion on Dragon.
There wasn't a conclusion.
I think. Hang on.
There's Dragonfly, yeah.
Can't even see it.
You can't see it. Here's what it's posted. You know.
For you, Jenna.
Yeah, that's what the actual sculpture looked like, but it's hidden. It's, I mean.
Okay.
Yeah, you can barely see it. It looks like it's part of the tree.
Yeah.
All right, so I I think we did say to remove that one.
Right.
Okay. So I think we we are done with this particular agenda. All right, going on to the next item, discussing placement of entries for the Call for Art program. This goes back to the Call for Art.
Monica, Monica, I'm I'm sorry, for the last item. Could we have a motion to about extending Jasper Priestess for two years?
I make a motion, we ask an artist, if we ask the artist if we can extend a loan without stipend for Jasper Priestess for two years.
I second the motion.
Okay, John?
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Gigian?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Chair Waldman?
No.
Motion passes five to one. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Um, going on to discussing placement of entries for the Call for Art program. This is in reference to some pieces for the Call for Art, which was on September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, before we discuss it, let's see if there's any comments from the public. Nope. All right, I think we had two items to discuss. One is a possible placement for Magnify and the other is Matthew Duffy's two pieces, if I recall. So I'm going to hand it off to the subcommittee who went off and looked for new spots for Magnify, which was three pieces, if I remember correctly.
Right. Um, I came up with three different spots. The first spot would be where the Dragonfly is leaving, because that's very sunny. And it's, they're colorful and they would look great there at the entrance to the park. That's the first spot. Then the second spot is here. Here Heritage Oaks, there's a dirt area before you get to the. You know, the soccer field, which would be very sweet. The kids would be coming in and they would see it. It's very sunny there. It wouldn't be bothered by the. Lawn lawnmower and it wouldn't be bothered by anything. And then you. So that's a good spot. And then the third spot I thought was Grant Park. There's a great on the west, sorry. Wet west, west entrance, west? Yeah, west entrance. So it's off of Newcastle. There's a path that you come in. So this is the path when you're coming in, very draft, but I don't think you can put it there because they weed whack all those weeds. But as you get in, there's this nice path that you, that there's plenty of room on the Ivy side. For. If there's a better picture. So I thought e- either three of those spots would be good. And Jenna Moore and my subcommittee agreed, right?
Those are great choices. Those are all really good choices. Good job, subcommittee.
Are you guys seeing my screen?
We're coming and thinking.
Okay, I'm trying to pull up the Grant Park location just for those. While it's coming up, I will remind the commission that Heritage Oaks Park, you did approve putting a piece in that dirt. Along Portland Avenue?
Yeah.
Right, but that's on Portland. That's far away from where I'm talking.
And don't we also have, don't we also have pieces coming into Grant Park too?
Yeah, we do, but that's not anywhere near. We've got one coming at the very entrance and of the two very entrances. So for the third spot, it's the third entrance and a lot of people come in from Newcastle on that pathway. In fact, when I was there yesterday, there were like five people sitting on the benches there, right? Kind of where those. Pieces would go, so. Do you have your cursor?
Yeah, has it come up? You're talking about right here, right?
Yes, not right there. Walk in like you're walking towards the, okay, right, right, right there. Why this side, the other side? Um, sorry, not that side. Go to the east.
Go on.
Go to the north. Up, 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 up. To the top of the.
That corner there, Terry?
Yeah.
Or something like that, yeah.
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 Yeah, it's a great spot.
Yeah, it's pretty bare there.
We have art at all three entrances to Grant Park.
Which is great, which I think is really good.
Yeah. And it kind of goes.
Dragonfly was, but we can put something else there and we can get something.
Right.
There. I I like having three pieces at Grant Park. That really shows that we've put an effort into getting art over there.
Yeah, I think everybody will be very happy when we finally get all those pieces there. And they all kind of go together. Ones, two of them are stone and the other one's light, so I think it, I think they'll look great. So anyway. That's my two cents.
John, are you going to show us another, the one of the other parts?
Yeah, well, I was going to see if you wanted to look at Heritage Jokes.
I think there's a lot of enthusiasm for this one spot already.
Well, that's why I stopped sharing my screen.
Go for it, Terry.
I I'd like to make a motion that we put.
God.
Magnify?
Yeah. Say it again, Monica?
Magnify?
Magnify, the three magnifies along that dirt area. Once you get into Grant Park from the Newcastle West entrance.
I second the motion.
Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Gigian?
Yes.
And Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
If if and when we get all the new pieces into Grant Park, we should try to do some sort of. Post or something about, look at all this art now in Grant Park. So either we get it in the city manager website or town crier. Or something else. Next door, that we have a good concentration now there, because it is a big change that we've been able, a big one that we're able to do it and something we've been wanting to do, so.
Or.
And I'll, if I can, I'll provide just a quick update on the installation of some of the other sculptures. As as I had mentioned, the the concrete installation of the concrete pads was delayed. Because of some illnesses within the maintenance department. I'm hoping that we can schedule the installations for the first part, some of. I'm hoping that we can schedule the installations for the first part, some of the installations for the first part of April.
Okay.
In the next few weeks. And when I have, when I have actual dates, of course, I will let you all know.
Okay. Yay. John, do we want to discuss Matthew Duffy, who we chose two pieces from, and he's on the East Coast, and it looks like getting those two pieces could be very expensive for him to ship? John?
Sure, yeah, sure. You said it, you said it already.
Okay. Were you able, I, my thought was to perhaps, instead of two pieces, choose one of the two, and that would be a little more cost effective for the artist to ship them. And because I think that was part of the problem, John, right? Correct, that he
Yes.
was balking at shipping two of them.
Yes.
Okay. Um, but I'd rather see one than none in the city. Is there any way, John, you would be able to bring up the pictures? Are you able to?
Yes.
He had the big red heart, right?
The big red, the low quality.
I love them.
And the sunrise sunset, which I also loved as well.
Yes.
Okay, I think we're all familiar with.
How much, how much was it gonna cost to ship them?
He was, I think he was saying it's more than the stipend.
Oh, yeah.
Because he, they are big pieces. The one, the heart was smaller, or was cheap, was, I don't want to say cheaper, less expensive than the, the
Sunrise Sunset.
Sunrise Sunset, thank you.
And how much was our stipend?
$1,500.
Man, why couldn't we get both of them?
They're both awesome pieces.
I know. Can we?
Well.
Can we find some money to pay for the shipping? For both? I mean, I like those pieces better than I like Midnight Stomp, to be honest with you.
I, I think they're both wonderful pieces. Maybe Terry's got a good idea. Maybe we ask the artist what the shipping costs are.
Yeah.
I like that idea. They are nice.
They're really, they're really good pieces.
Yeah.
So the the artist indicated that the heart probably about a thousand, the sunrise sunset about closer to 2,000.
And then there's, there's another thing we have to contemplate, too, is that at some point, we would, we may have to pay to ship them, ship one, if not both, back.
Yeah, I almost wonder if we, if we are gonna pay for shipping, can we get a longer loan?
That's a great idea, Hillary, like five years.
Yeah, because it's, if we're, because I don't want to set a precedent either. I mean, I think we need to be careful. A, we'll put our call for art, we're pretty clear in our terms. You know, if we're gonna make this exception, I think we do need to think about it long term. You know, can we get it for long, can we get it for longer? Or, you know, what are we gonna get for also kind of making this exception? Because we also can't set a precedent of then taking artwork and then always individually paying for it, because.
Maybe we ask for 10 years.
That's all. I think five is good.
Well, there's also the issue, if he ships them out here, and I've seen one, if not both of them, in, when I've looked at sculpture, other places that have sculpture loan programs, these pieces have circulated. So does he come out and get them at the end of the loan, or do we, the city staff have to pack it up? I mean, packaging these things up is frightening.
And that's one thing I was going to, one piece I was gonna add, was if, which isn't, I mean, we possibly can do it, but if he ships them, then the city is responsible for installing. Usually, the artists bring them out, and the artist is the one who's actually installing. We, we will provide, you know, a crew there on site to help out in small ways. But this would mean that the city is installing on our own, which, again, not necessarily something we can't do, but would be an added piece to it. I would hesitate to promise that the city is gonna pack up the pieces for him. Because I would not want to be responsible for packing and shipping.
He would have to pack them, and if he wants them back after the 10-year loan, he's gonna have to come and pack them up and sell.
Do we hear 15? Um, I, I think there's agreement amongst most, if not all of us, that they're both wonderful pieces. Do we want to direct John to see if we can get a longer term loan and possibly part of that is paying for the shipping, the one-way shipping?
Yeah.
I think, yeah, I don't think 10 years is unreasonable. I mean, the, the dragonfly was installed almost 10 years ago. So I don't think it's reasonable to have it for that long, if he's willing to.
Do we want to try and ask for 10 years and see what, he might come back with five or three, but, but it doesn't hurt to ask?
Yeah. I mean, I do think because.
A lot of our sculptures have been here for over 10 years. So he understands that that's kind of what our expectation is.
Right. We can also say, too, these are up for available for purchase by residents. I mean, it's part of the art without walls. So, you know, they are theoretically, could be purchased, someone could fall in love with it and purchase it. But as Monica said, if these circulate, he may want to get them back into circulation. But, you know, we can ask. I do think, you know, we need to be very careful that, you know, he knows he's gonna have to come and get it, and wrap it and all that, because it's also a burden on us. And I'm a little, I like the pieces, but I'm a little frustrated. Like, we had a pretty clear call for art that these were in California. You know, if you can't maybe ship them, maybe don't submit them, you know, but you know.
I think the cost probably skyrocketed, too, right?
That's true, that's true.
For him to drive them now, the cost of gas alone is.
That's true. At least he's not leaving California. A lot more expensive to leave than it is to come.
Unless you have a house.
We make a motion then that John reach out to the artist of Matthew Duffy and propose we will cover the cost of shipping one way for an extended loan period of 10 years as a starting point, with the artist to come pick up and wrap when removing the art pieces, to come and get them and wrap them up and everything.
I second the motion.
Before we make that motion, I think we need to lock down the actual shipping price, though. Have John maybe go back to the artist. You said it was 1,000 and 2,000, but I think we need to get, make sure that, is that firm, John?
Uh, no, and that, that was gonna be my suggestion, was perhaps I reach out to him, see if he is interested in the city potentially covering the shipping costs, if he is, for, for an extended loan. I would perhaps ask for some flexibility of between five to 10 years. Of course, I'll start with the 10. And if he's interested, then I will ask him, can you give me a firm cost of what it costs to ship, simply because he's gonna have, you know, companies that he works with and know better than I will what it costs to ship. And once he gets that dollar amount, I can come back to you all and make sure that that is something that we want to do. And I can let him know that, once I have the dollar amount, we can talk about it here and see if you all approve.
Okay, I withdraw my second, because I thought the 1,000, 2,000 was firm. Thank you.
But Hillary, I think if you, do we need, John, do we need to have a motion for you to go and talk to the artist again, or?
I, I think if there is consensus on the, the commission, that, that is just fine.
Thank you. Thank you, John. Just one question in your long list.
All right, John. Um, let's go on to discussing our hometown haiku event, and I'm going to first ask if there's any comments from the public before I yield to Hillary. Nope. Okay, Hillary, go for it.
Yeah, the hometown haiku event or contest is open. This is where we're asking Los Altos residents, or people who work here, to describe or write about Los Altos in haiku form. So advertising is, write about Los, describe Los Altos in 17 syllables, and you could win a prize. We have four categories for kids, adults, and seniors. We have two judges, Carol Galston from the Nature Gallery, and Jacob, Jonathan Wiseman from the City Council are gonna be judges. And then we are going to be displaying the haiku, the winning haiku, and possibly, probably the finalists during the champagne, the bubbly stroll in May. We talked with Lava, and we are going to have haiku on display, so people will enjoy champagne and haiku during that. So I will send the flyer out to John to send out, so please help spread the word. I've got it on Nextdoor and various groups, but please just help spread the word, because it's always the uphill battle with all of us, so. That's it.
And Hillary, do you need any budget as far as?
As far as printing, I think if we're gonna be printing, I think I looked at it, I think we can do it for about like 250, if we're gonna be printing them on nice poster size for the haiku, the champagne stroll, so. Yep.
John, do we need to make a motion for some budget for the haiku display?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay.
I'll take the motion. We, yeah, I'll make a motion that we budget about $250 for printing haiku materials for the haiku contest. Oh, also, we're gonna need to get prizes, so let's make it 300, because we'll give out some gift cards.
Do you want to make it 350?
Yeah, let's make it 350. So we'll do a gift card, so.
I'll second.
Do we have a date for the haiku?
It runs through March, through April 15th, and winners will be announced, I believe, on April 29th. Yes, the 29th.
Okay.
Okay, Commissioner Moore?
Yes.
Commissioner Jan Giggian?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture?
Yes.
Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Vice Chair King?
Yes.
And Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right. Our friend, Will You Dance With Me, is up to discuss next. Before we go into it, any comments about Will You Dance For Me from the public? Yes, no? Okay. So John included as part of our packet guidelines for how we decommission a piece. John, to my knowledge, we've never gone through a formal process like this before to do a decommission, and I know you've included it in the packet, but can you just touch on some highlights?
Yes, sure. Sure. So starting back in the process, typically, requests for the discussion of decommissioning is brought up. It can be brought up by any number of individuals. We had that conversation at the last meeting, where you all approved putting it on the agenda to discuss actual decommission. As we are now at that stage, you'll then review the request and decide. You know, we gather community feedback, if there is any. We did not receive any public comment today. And then make a recommendation as to whether or not we should decommission it. You can choose what to do with it. Either selling, or trying to sell, donating, destroying, any number of options. There are some criteria that you'll, that you consider. Those are on page four of five of the PDF. I think it's page three of the actual guidelines. A number of questions that you can consider. And if at the end of the consideration, the commission decides, you can make findings that it is appropriate to decommission, then you can make the a motion to decommission, and we can decide, you can decide what to do with it.
Does the artist have any say with it, about it?
We can get input from the artist. What I might suggest is seeing if the artist is, you know, if we are gonna just decommission it, seeing if the artist is interested in reacquiring the piece. I think at least one of the commissioners has spoken with the artist, and perhaps he's not as interested in coming up and getting it.
He's, he's hard to get in touch with, so, again, just because you can find them on the internet, doesn't mean they're lawyers, so.
And.
We could, yeah.
And, and, you know, because the city does own the piece, it is up to the discretion of the city of what to do with the piece.
Okay, thank you. I'm going through the information that John sent us for the review criteria. There's a section called Use Resources Wisely. It says, does the artwork require excessive maintenance or repair, have faults of design, or workmanship? Or is repairing or securing the artwork impractical or unfeasible? I don't know if it qualifies as excessive maintenance, but it's not maintenance we can do ourselves. We don't feel it.
No.
So I, I believe it qualifies under that subheading. I don't, I don't think it qualifies under anything else, so. You know, I, I went and looked, and I, the artist sells through a gallery, and the piece is worth right now like 3,300. It's had fiberglass and paint and a bunch of other things. It's not any kind of medium I know how to fix, and I just fear that having someone come out and fix it may be worth, cost more than the actual piece is worth, so. If we do decide to move forward with decommissioning, do we want to either donate it to someone or sell it?
I would be interested if there are any dance schools that would be interested in having it.
Yeah.
Ballet schools.
We discussed putting it in front of, it used to be San Juan School of Dance. I'm not sure if they still go by that name, but that could be a good point, that we might want to do a little research. But then again, we don't know. You know, here's something, it's damaged, we don't know what the cost is to fix it. Would you like it? That might be a hard sell, and that would require one, if not more, of us to make a bunch of phone calls as well.
Can I, can I add a piece to that? You know, certainly it's an option, is to see if a dance studio is willing to take it. My guess is that if you find, if we find one that is willing to accept it, they're going to turn around and ask the city if they can put it out in front of their dance studio, in which case, in which case the city probably is better off just keeping it and relocating it.
Okay, that's fair. Good point.
And we'd have to probably pour a pad and move it, and, yeah, that's true.
It depends on where, it depends on where the, where the location is.
Okay.
That's a good point, though. So not donating it. Then.
Do we want to put something in the city manager's weekly update and see if anyone wants it? Offer it to the residents?
How would we decide if we get more than one person?
We can auction it off.
The Parks Department.
I'd be willing to call around to the dance studios and the ballet schools to see if any of them are interested.
Okay.
I don't know if that helps, but I could do that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel bad.
A dance studio down at Rancho, that'd be a great spot for it. That's what I was thinking, too.
Just, just be aware of what they're talking about. We don't want it to come back to us, where it gets, it gets put on city property, we have to maintain it, so.
It's not city property. That's, that's.
Yeah, so then they, they could, if they want to take it, as long as they know they gotta maintain it and install it, so.
The Rancho Dance Studios, private property.
Janet, do you want, it feels like this is, agenda item will never die, but. Janet, do you want, it feels like this is agenda item will never die, but.
Let's try to get it off the agenda, though, let's either Janet can either find a home for it, or we put it in the city manager thing and say, we have a sculpture someone can adopt permanently, please, you know, email or be ready to come before the commission and make your case.
I, I could do that. And so we, finding a new home for it, so we would say, you take it, you maintain it, but we're not who's gonna, we're not, you're not gonna pay us, we're not gonna pay you. Will we pay to move it?
No.
They have to move it.
They have to pay to move it.
And how?
I guess the city could take it down off its concrete thing, right, but we're not gonna move it, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. The city should take it off its concrete thing, so it doesn't get ruined in the process.
Right, yeah.
I would, I would I would, sorry to interrupt, I would add, it, it depends on where it's going, but the city could potentially move it, you know, if, if a resident here in town wants it, I think it's, it's light enough that we could probably pick it up and put it in the back of a truck and drive it somewhere in town. I wouldn't want to go you know, outside of Los, I mean, maybe a couple miles outside Los Altos, but you know, if it's here local, I think we probably could help.
Do, so the question is, do we want, I mean, Janet can email a couple dance studios, but do we want to open it up to the rest of the community, or we just want to kind of wrap this up, and either it's a dance studio or it's over?
Okay, all right. Go ahead, Janet. I could reach out to the private property folks first and see if the private property folks want it, and then if, and get a quick turnaround on that, and then let you guys know, and then if that's a no-go, then open it up everywhere. Post it on Nextdoor, put it in the Town Crier, I don't know if you're gonna pay for that, but, and then on the city manager thing.
I, I would say, let's just put it the city manager, let's not, yeah, not broadcast.
I'm gonna probably say what, I don't know if John is thinking this, but I don't know if we as commissioners are allowed to try and give away a piece of city property. We may not want to ourselves post it to, to Nextdoor.
Oh, oh, good point, yeah.
I think go through the city manager email and see what, what responses we get, and then if we don't, go further from there, you know.
So maybe Janet, you want to try contacting, you said some private property owners like the, the dance schools? If you don't get anything within like a week, if you could write some text and give it to John to give to the city manager, and let's see if we get a response, otherwise. Either way, it's on the agenda next meeting and, and a final decision is going to be made one way or another.
Sure, and is it okay if I have contact San Juan, because you know, they're at the corner of a state and I think second, and see if they want to just have it in front of their studio? Okay, so I'll do that, too.
I think that would actually be a great spot for it, but as long as they know it has some damage and they may have to contact the artist to fix it.
Okay, with you.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you, Janet.
Sure.
Thank you, Janet.
All right. The Los Altos Arts Task Force Subcommittee. Before we go into it, any comments on the task force Subcommittee Report or the Subcommittee itself from the public? Nope. All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Jenna if she's ready, because we had some meetings and we, we made some progress, and it's all goodness, so Jenna.
Yeah, okay, great. So as most of you probably know, we had a meeting on March first with various arts organizations throughout Los Altos, and we had a great turnout, we were pleasantly surprised, so in attendance, there was a rep from Lava, Los Altos Stage, the History Museum, Nature Gallery, First Fridays, the Library, Gallery Nine, MV LA Freestyle Academy, and Arts Los Altos. And pretty unanimously, I felt that everyone was excited about promoting in Los Altos and collaborating on expanding art in Los Altos. One idea that was brought up was creating a master calendar of all art events in Los Altos across organizations. Where, I don't know if that's something we're going to be able to make happen, I don't know if you want me to go into detail about that, but that's something people are really interested in, and I think it, big picture, it's just that people are willing to collaborate. Another thing we brought up was creating a roster to share contact information across Another thing, we talked to Lava about collaborating with their events, and I know we met with them and made progress on the haiku contest, promoting that at the bubbly stroll, so that was really productive. And let's see, what else really stood out here? Hillary and Monica, please feel free to jump in if I'm forgetting anything. One thing that I thought was kind of neat, so we know for future events, is that Bryant Bow of Los Altos Library, he offered for us to use the library's free promotional services, like the bulletin boards, email circulation, and social media for free events, so unfortunately not for all events, only ones that are free. But I thought that that would be great exposure. And just overall, it was a really great, positive, productive meeting. Everyone I got the notion that people were like, finally, we're all coming together, we're talking about things. So I think that we're gonna make a lot of progress.
Yeah, I would say, I think there was a lot of enthusiasm, a lot of very positive feeling about it. Definitely the kind of business side of it, they really want people in downtown to be doing, you know, art events, because that brings people downtown, they want it all over downtown, not just in specific areas. They're very receptive to that. I talked to Carol Garston and Georgie from the Natural, the History Museum about they may come up with a dance event around First Friday, possibly in support of Ukraine, so they're working on that. I think what we're kind of down to is kind of trying to figure out a structure of how will this work? How, you know, it's gonna need kind of people to step up and do stuff, and is that, that can, you know, we can support events, like doing the haiku with the champagne stroll, that's something we can do. We're gonna hopefully do some, you know, having a presence at the farmer's market, which we're gonna get to do, can do stuff. So it's, there's things we still can work out, but there's definitely a lot of, a lot of positive feedback through this idea, and I think it's good that we did it, because it just shows we're trying to bring together the different art groups to serve all of Los Altos, so I think it was important for us to do and kind of start the ball rolling. And maybe, you know, maybe a little bit of a while to figure out the structure and how it will work, but we'll, we'll get there, I think, and we'll see if it goes.
And there were, across organizations, we were talking about collaborating too, like we were talking with Arts Los Altos about doing the sort of like the scavenger hunt, weren't we, and then like MV LA about having students with their artwork and open storefronts, so there's a lot of.
A lot of good ideas. A lot of enthusiasm for it, which is great, so.
Yeah.
And we don't have a date for a second meeting, but that'll be pending.
And we'll work on getting out, we need to probably do another email out to the people, but we can, we'll, we'll meet together and talk about that, so.
And there was also discussion of a brochure that had public art, you know, either through downtown or through the city.
Yeah. Well, we have our, the public art brochure, which we're kind of talking about getting updated, but we did talk about a scavenger hunt that encompassed not just city-owned art, but other art put in by other groups. Which I think would be a great idea, and that would be of interest to people, so.
Hillary, should I bring up the brochure right now, or should we wait until we talk about the budget?
Maybe talk about the budget, I think, yeah. Is that, do you want to do that then, Monica, or should we do that now, or?
I, I, I think so, because we probably want to talk about the farmer's market, you know, if John's got some dates for us, or if he knows when he might have some dates, and then we can figure out some budgeting items with that.
Overall, for the Arts Task Force or Los Altos Arts Council, which I think we landed on the name, I think really positive, positive energy, positive feedback, we're, we'll just kind of keep moving forward with it as we go, and we'll see where it evolves to.
That was good. And through our meeting and then our meeting with Lava, Hillary was able to arrange for the haiku contest for displaying, so that already is a win, I think. All right. Um, last, let's talk about money. Budget recommendations, I don't know if John, if you want to start the conversation, but before we go into it, I'll see if there's any public comments on our budget recommendations or any ideas? Nope, all right, John.
Oh, oh, sorry.
I don't.
Got to my mute button too late. I did have a question on the public, on the budget. Is there a kind of a, a high-level view of, and there probably is, but this is just as a member of the public, and is there a high level view of what the commission wants to accomplish, you know, as far as how the city's gonna look with art, or is, are there any particular ideas and goals of that the, has mind, you know, and then going out and reaching out to see what that budget would be?
You know, I, I apologize, I realized I missed the, the agenda item that came before it, so my apologies, but let's go ahead, we'll, we'll talk about the budget, and then we'll go back to the, the one last agenda item, so. Actually, I take that back, let's and I think it will help answer your question or give you some ideas if we go to the, the problem is that the agenda has received an update from the Subcommittee, but it's oh, there's the task force, because we also have one more Subcommittee that looks like it's missing from the from the agenda, okay, I take that back, let's go ahead and talk about the budget. We have, we have one item that looks like it fell off the, the agenda. And so, to try and answer, I'll try and answer Dana's question as far as what we're trying to accomplish, I think part of that is, is answered in our work plan and also going over our budget. Our commission hasn't previously had a budget or had very much of a budget, so this is really our, our first time handling a large amount of money and trying to decide what we want to do with it. And I know that that doesn't really answer it, but we, we are trying to figure out our goals as far as what we as a commission want to do in the city.
We're also, if I can jump in, we're also we don't know what our future budget will be, because while that we have the percent for art program in place, sometimes we don't, we just don't always know what kind of budget we're gonna have, so we do have this kind of healthy sculpture loan program, and we want to be able to protect the city's assets, so we need kind of funding for that, so we I think the budget, we are kind of looking at very carefully and very prudently to make sure we have funds to take care of the pieces the city owns, because we don't know what our future income or what, what money we'll get coming in, would you say that's correct, Monica?
Yeah, and, and to touch on what Hillary is saying, we as a commission haven't had money to do basic maintenance. And some of our pieces may need some maintenance, which we had earmarked last budget cycle. We only received our percent for funding, art percent for art funding, I think it was back in last May, so this is a whole new process for us to actually be able to, to really budget. John, did you have any comments before we go into this?
No, I don't have much to add beyond what's in the staff report. I will just kind of give some ballpark dollars, because I think we're still waiting for final determination on exactly how much is in the public art fund. But I believe the last budget, budget year, we had a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in the public art fund. The city budgeted sixty thousand of that into the last, into the current year's CIP, as well as budgeted fifty thousand for next year's CIP, which means if you take those out, there was still fifty-six thousand left from the original hundred and sixty-six thousand. We've also received additional funds, at least two hundred thousand dollars more, so go wild, no, I'm just kidding. There, there is, there are, there are funds available, should the commission have projects and, and ideas. My suggestion is to really focus in, rather than just putting a blank dollar amount, focus in on, these are the projects we want to accomplish, of course, you've talked about some already, and so we can include those into the, the recommended budget for next year.
And John, can you give an estimate of the sixty thousand for this year? I know the, the sculpture loan program, we, we chose, I think, nine, ten, eleven pieces. How much of that money we've actually spent this year, or is earmarked for some of the sculptures that we picked? And, and other projects?
I would say, all told of the sixty thousand, probably between twenty, probably around twenty to twenty-five thousand has been earmarked or spent. I'm thinking of the sculpture stipends as well as Mother Hen. Did we, did we, I don't, I think we include, I think we paid for Mother Hen out of, not out of that sixty thousand, but so I'd say twenty to twenty-five, and that includes the, the funds that were earmarked for the community center. The murals that Vice Chair King was talking about earlier.
So the murals were voted on by city council out of, I think, the general fund, were they not?
But they're, but not, not for the actual murals themselves, the, the work that Linda Gass was gonna do.
Oh, okay, the extra five.
Yes.
Okay. So we still have money to go wild with.
That's not the term that I used, even though it was, even though it was the term.
With spending. So we are looking at possibly spending twenty-five or thirty thousand on Stomp. Possibly. And then possibly fifteen for, for the tower. Which would be another forty-five. Which would still, that would take us to about what we were supposed to spend the sixty thousand, give or take. So I will mention, is it appropriate for me to mention, Jen and I are on a budgeting Subcommittee, can I mention some of our findings? John, is that okay right now?
Yeah, that was, yep.
So we have started the process of talking to other cities and talking to them, their public art staff liaisons, and it's, it's a slow process finding out anything. You know, they're busy people. But there seems to be two camps, one is a camp where they have a staff person who is paid for, who is dedicated to public art, and they can be part-time, so that would mean they're a city employee, but there's no benefits involved, I believe. Or that they are like John, and they are, they have other city duties. One of the pieces of feedback I got from Redwood City is that they have things that are being built, like a new senior center, and it's recommended that they have some public art associated with the senior center or the port of Redwood City, we don't have a port, but they wanted to try and get more people down to the port, so they figured public art might help bring people. So sometimes larger projects come from civic engagement or do civic buildings or civic processes. If we want to think about that going forward in the next year or two. If we want to think about a gateway project somewhere in the city. You know, commissioning somebody to, or, or an organization to create a, a larger piece. organization to create, um, uh, a, a larger piece. And I think, um, Jen and I still have some more conversations, so we'll probably next meeting have more information on that, but, um, something for us to think about. And, uh, we can also think about budgeting for, um, things like everybody is an artist. Those are smaller dollar amounts, but if we want to do those, you know, there, there is a dollar amount attached to that. So, you know, a few thousand a year maybe for those kind of events. And the question is, do people have other ideas? Yes, take yourself off mute, Jenna.
Sorry about that, my kids just came home, so, um, so an idea that, um, we were talking about in our, um, subcommittee, Janet and Hillary, is updating our brochure, um, and we really, have you all seen the flyers around town that lava posts, like the beer stroll and the bubbly stroll, they're really nice, but the artists, the graphic artists who does those does a great job. So I reached out to her, I got her contact, contact information from Scott, and she gave me, um, not exact pricing, because what we want will be contingent on how intricate we want to be, but it starts around a hundred and fifty dollars per page. And I mean, right now, our brochure, I don't know if you'd count this as four pages technically, because I, it folds right in the middle, so maybe we'd be looking at around, starting at like six hundred to, to make a really nice brochure that would give us some great credibility in Los Altos. I know Janet, you said that Arts helped us with a really nice brochure, right, that?
Well. Go ahead, Janet.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, sorry, I, so I was just, um, I found that they had a really very helpful, informative brochure about who they are, what they do, and I thought it would be fantastic if we had something like that, especially if we're going to be at the farmer's market, um, and just to get the word out about the Public Arts Commission. I got the sense from the event on Saturday that people were like, oh, there's a Public Arts Commission. So, um, so I think it would be great to get the word out, if only to engage people and let them know, you know, how they could get involved, so.
Well, and I agree with that, and to piggyback on that, I think if we're gonna do any kind of, have any kind of presence at events, we need the brochure, we need something to hand out that tells who we are, what we do, and shows some of the artwork, also like a table banner, which is like a hundred and fifty bucks. So we need kind of a couple thousand, you know, for some very basic graphics and handouts that can represent us as, as an organization, and I think that's.
Like that could probably come out of the budget that, that we were, okay. Yeah, and I think probably because sooner rather than later, if, um, we'll ask John if we had, uh, if and when we're going to be able to get to the farmer's market, like Hillary said, you, you don't want to sit there empty-handed, you want something.
I'm ready to get the ball rolling with the artist, so whenever we can vote on it. To go forward.
Could I ask a question too? Maybe this is getting ahead of the game, but, um, but we're talking about the farmer's market. Does the Arts, Arts Commission have a banner or something for that purpose?
That's, we need one, we need, that's what we need, we need like a table banner for that, we do not have one. I think we have one yard, I think we have one yard sign somewhere from that.
John, do, do we, um, have any potential dates, or do you know anything about getting a spot at the farmer's market?
Yeah, so I've, I've been talking with the staff who's organizing the city table at the farmer's market. They are sending me, um, some of the dates in which, uh, the commission can pick a few. We will not get, uh, nearly as often as I think the commission would have liked. There are a number of other commissions as well as city programs that are all vying for the table. Um, I'm hopeful we'll get, um, perhaps three dates, um, to start with. They did want me to remind you all that it is quite a commitment, um, because we need to be there the entire time, for the farmer's market, which is from four to eight, um, with some setup prior.
And take that, can you make sure that they, they would give us dates that would not, uh, conflict with our meeting?
Yes, I, I believe that they, the dates that they've gotten, um, I'll have to look and, I'll have to talk with them about which dates, they, they weren't able to get a table every, like every day, well, no, every day, or every week of every month.
We know that.
Yeah. No, the, the, the city was not able to get a table at every farmer's market.
Busy.
Yeah.
So, um, I guess we'll have to wait till next month, which is going to be the, the week two of the farmer's market to even find out when we could, um, get a slot or two or three.
Yeah, but I would, I mean, I think if there are materials, I will, will definitely have slots. If there are materials that you want to have prepared for the, the farmer's market, um, I would, I would include those as part of, um, budget recommend, yeah, budget recommendations.
Now, I think, yeah.
So I would, I'd like to vote on our, um, a banner, a brochure, and also some funds for having perhaps some kind of art, exhibit or, um, some kind of event, artists coming and doing something with people. Um, I, I contacted, um, a glass blower and they run three grand for, um, for an event like this. I spoke to, Foothill College has a, a clay club, and it would be probably pretty inexpensive. We buy some air clay, I've got some texture tools, and we could have a couple people come and, and do some clay work with, you know, the kids and adults and, and, um, you know, maybe for a couple hundred dollars, but I think we need to have a fund for, for the farmer's market events.
That's a good idea, yeah.
So you're, Jenna, you were saying about six hundred to maybe a thousand.
I think so, and I think the banner could probably be included in that too. He didn't give me an exact price, but we looked on Vista Print, was that where we were looking, Hillary? And it was, it was pretty inexpensive. So, yeah, I think, yeah, upwards of like a thousand, maybe even like twelve hundred, just a buffer, might be good.
Yep.
And then.
Go ahead, I got you, I think we should budget for an artist, some artist.
Actually, wait, okay, so the six hundred is just the fee to produce it, six hundred plus, and then we have to print them out, so. But I, I don't imagine it'll be that much. I think, um, I think FedEx can go charge us like a dollar per page, per colored page, so.
Well, it might be more, but I mean, I think we can, we can still afford, I think we can, let's say we do two thousand to do the brochure, I think that'll probably get in most of it. If not, we can come back and we'll do a special meeting, but I think we could do that. It's, it's not expensive, yeah.
Is there, the city has a contract or something with, I knew they printed our business cards from Alpha Graphics. I don't know if there's any discount that could be had there, but.
That's a good idea, we should look into that.
It's a good thought.
John?
We can look into it.
Okay, um, would we, um, I know we're doing a budget discussion and it's supposed to be budget in the future, but can we make a motion to okay, um, a, a fund for both, um, a brochure and a banner now? Get that in the works?
Yeah, I would, I would recommend, um.
And then maybe a separate one for, or an artist, uh, fund as well?
I would, I would, I was going to recommend, um, a, a motion for a dollar amount for farmer's market events to be used from the current year CIP project.
Okay. Uh, I guess I haven't made a motion yet today, so I will make a motion for us, the Public Arts Commission, to create a fund of, let's say five thousand dollars, because we have to include, um, artist fees as well. Um, and our, uh, five thousand dollars for, um, a brochure, a banner, and artist fees for farmer market, farmer's market.
I'll second that motion.
Right, and to clarify, what I think I heard was to use five thousand dollars from the current year CIP project for that purpose. Is that what I heard?
Yes, John, that is exactly what I said.
Thank you. Commissioner Corrigan?
Yes.
Commissioner Couture? I think Commissioner Couture may have, oh, thank you.
Yes, I'm here, I just.
Commissioner Jan Gigian?
Yes.
Commissioner Moore? Vice Chair King?
Yes.
And Chair Waldman?
Yes.
Do we want to earmark, um, some funds for, um, that will potentially go to, since we have, um, a larger amount of funds than we've ever had, um, a potential gateway project to be researched over the next fiscal year?
Why don't you talk about kind of what a gateway project is briefly for people who may not.
Okay, a gateway project is a larger project where we would commission someone, we'd find a spot, let's say, we've got, um, a new housing, um, development going in on distal, is it distal drive, distal circle? Um, and bringing a piece that is made specifically by an artist or a group for that site that is commissioned. It's, it's unique, it's not like our sculpture loan program where they usually send us, I've already got this made and I send it all over the world, would you like to take it? So it'd be a specific piece, it'd be a showcase piece, um, perhaps made by someone who's fairly well-known, either locally, to the local, to the Bay Area, or internationally or nationally. A lot of cities undergo this kind of process, this is a pretty common.
And so what you're proposing is we research that earmark funds to research it, or earmark, or just set up research?
Um, I think it's the kind of thing where it would require probably a subcommittee several months to even start looking into it. We probably need to do some, some community outreach, um, so it's, it's, it's a process that could end up taking quite some time, and with all the changes in the laws of housing in California, it may be that certain areas are going to be changing a lot, like perhaps San Antonio, Foothill, we, we don't know yet. Um, so maybe an area that we start looking into, it turns out it's going to change in a way that it's not appropriate, we have to refocus. So this is more like a long-term project, this is not a, a one or two-month, um, project. You know, something that, that, um, with probably some community input, will say this is Los Altos, this is, you know, a piece that people will come and see and, and, and brings not just visitors from our own community, but from outside our community as well.
And this is, uh, a piece of sculpture? Is it sculpture we're talking about?
Um, it could be sculpture, it could be an environmental piece, um, there's the, I forgot the artist's name, but the work's over at the Palo Alto Art Center, the, um.
Patrick, um, or, yeah.
Yeah, he, he does, um, he takes, uh, I guess it's branches, I think it's willow, but I don't remember, um, and he winds them and people can go into them, they're interactive, they're, um, almost like houses made out of pieces of trees. Um, but he does really amazing work, I, I don't know what his costs are, I'm, I'm sure he's not inexpensive. Yeah, I'm sure, I'm sure I'd be, you know, my jaw would drop.
That's like a hundred thousand dollar item, or like, it's like having like Cristo from Raptors City or something, so. Um, so you're talking about a gateway piece that not, not necessarily a piece that goes on every gateway into the city, it could be something.
Correct, correct. It's not like, um, I don't know what you call the pieces where they've got the rock with the, the cedar in them, but that's already kind of a gateway, you know, you've entered Los Altos.
So a gateway or signature piece, so really we need a subcommittee, people who are willing to be on a subcommittee to research it, so, don't all shout at once, guys.
But, but before even doing that, we have to think about, you know, budgeting in the sense that we, it's a project that would probably take a, a while to, uh, research, to, uh, gather community input, to even then reach out to artists. So this would be a long-term thing, and hopefully between now and then, hopefully there's the chance we'll get more budget as well.
Agreed.
John, do you have any knowledge about, um, any potential bud, budget additions in the pipeline?
Uh, not right at the moment, but I do know that there are a number of projects that are coming and coming very soon. Um, one suggestion that I was going to make, um, sort of to move this along, is if, if that is something the commission is interested in, then perhaps we put a, a placeholder dollar amount in the, uh, let's see, or the, the fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four CIP, so the next year project, you know, we can add, you know, if a hundred thousand is the dollar amount that the commission is comfortable with, um, recommend adding a hundred thousand dollars to that year's, uh, budget. And that'll give.
I, I was gonna say, letting people know that it may not cost that much as well, so.
Sure, yeah.
We don't know.
Yep.
Um, are, are scholarships something we would ever do in our budget, like scholarships for art students or scholarships for people who have done art, or is that something we would do?
And, and it's a good thing you brought that up, Hillary, because I meant to mention that we had okayed, um, the, at least the one thousand dollar, um, stipend, um, and we were going to revisit it in September, but, um, we may want to look at, once that program has launched, maybe expanding it.
Okay, that's a good idea, okay.
But we probably need to go through at least one cycle and then decide as a group, like, do we want to expand it? Do, should it be more, should it be less, you know? And how, did we do the right thing the first time, and what, what did we learn the first time we didn't, so? Um, I, I think we should make, uh, maybe not make a motion, but we should, um, think about doing a larger project, and it doesn't lock us into doing it. Um, again, research needs to be done and seeing if it's even appropriate for our city.
John, Anita here, pardon me for interrupting, have you guys talked at all about something that I think we brought up many months ago, which was possibly connecting with the people who are doing three-thirty distal?
Yeah, I, I just brought it up, that there's a, a project on distal that, that maybe, um, maybe taking art there, maybe this kind of project would be appropriate there as well.
Well, I know that they have, first of all, a very constrained site, but I have seen some renderings and some notions of things they want to do. I have no idea if there's either a place or an interest in their potentially working with you guys, but it's just about the right time, if not already the right time, to, to query that. John, is that something you'd want me to do, would you want to do, how do we want, how would we want to handle that? Because, you know, I can call Walden, um, or we could do it through staff, it doesn't matter.
I, I can, we, we can do it on staff.
Okay. And it, and it's not a, you know, I think it's a, it's not an ear interference thing, it's an offer.
Right.
And Anita, I think that goes back to what I was saying a little bit earlier when I reached out to, um, the John equivalent in Redwood City, that he said that there are civic, um, projects that come to their arts commission asking for, um, potential new art projects to help, um, either in the case of, uh, near their new senior housing, they had a pumping station that wasn't the most attractive, so they, um, hired an artist to work with some locals' kids, and they painted murals on all sides, made it a lot more pleasant, um, and also like the port of Redwood City to try and get people down there, so, um, some cities, they take, uh, feedback from organizations within the city who would like art brought to them.
Right.
So, um, if I hear it correctly, then John can, um, reach out to whoever's working on this particular project and see if there could be a need? John?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
And John, remind us, when, um, uh, do we have to have all our budgeting ideas ready and on paper to send to city council? That's May, correct?
Uh, we should have it wrapped up by the next meeting, so by the, the end of April.
Okay.
Um, yeah, it, it really needs to rewrap, that's.
Yeah, it really needs to rewrap, that's because it needs to be wrapped into the overall budgeting process, kind of by the department. Normally, this would have gone through whatever the department was of the servicing staff member, but, you know, you're not a department, you've got John.
A department of one. So let me throw this out there, do we want as a commission to possibly have a placeholder for something in the next budgeting cycle, a process that will take a while, but could bring some, you know, an interesting piece of artwork somewhere in the city where people really want it after, you know, some public outreach and such? Oh, Janet, you're on mute.
I think it's a good idea to reserve, since it's a significant project, to put aside the money to just preserve it, since, you know, we don't know what the future budget situation would look like.
I agree, let's put a placeholder amount for a gateway or signature art installation.
Or just larger project than we've.
Larger project, and we could, you know, do a big budget number because, you know, a big piece will require a big budget number. You know, like sixty thousand or a hundred thousand.
Terry?
Yes?
Do you have any comments?
I concur with everything everybody said, basically. I'm a cautious budget person.
I know you are, that's why I asked, because I don't want to just say, okay, I don't hear anything from anyone, let's put a big number down. I'm just going to go around, Jenna?
I don't have anything to add.
Okay, and Lucy?
I think it's a good idea, keep it talking.
Terry, I think you said sixty, or was it Hillary?
It was Hillary.
Okay.
That was me, I think I would do sixty to like, I mean, you might as well put a bigger one on it, if we come in under, even better. And I think if you were talking about getting a pretty significant artist, like we kind of had talked about doing something in conjunction with the Environmental Commission, you know, you are looking at a big, like, if you got to try to get a Choluli or something, that, you got to pay big fees for that. So a really significant art thing is going to be expensive, you know. I would say like, at least like sixty to seventy-five even.
Do you want to go seventy-five and again?
If you're thirty-five, if you come in under, then you'd come in under.
And again, reiterating for the hundredth time, it doesn't lock us into anything, it's just a placeholder.
Right.
I.
Don't worry, as long as you're not doing two hundred thousand dollars, I'm good.
Did I hear two hundred thousand?
No, 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 no.
That's still pretty cheap in the art world to say that, so, I mean, in the, in the, having like a major exhibition come to your, or major thing come to your town, I think relatively, we might be hard pressed to find, so we'll find out, so.
Yeah, and it might turn out that we get more funding between now and, you know, six months or a year from now. We don't know, or we might decide that it's now is not the time, we don't know yet.
Right, yes, exactly.
What would Choluli be, do you think?
Choluli, oh, like five million probably, because it's sellout, I mean.
I mean, his, his like bowls are like five to ten, you know, grand, so.
All right.
And it's also, those artists are booked out years and years, but you know, with him, you know, you're getting a known quantity that's very easily marketed, and that's going to bring revenue to your account because you're basically getting a rock star, so, you know, the goal.
People will go out of their way to come see.
So maybe it's, I don't know, maybe a hundred thousand and maybe just every year contribute to that pot of gold.
How much can we get for Will You Dance for me?
Yeah. I mean, it'd be great to have a really nice, significant art thing, you know, that did draw people in to see it, and that type of thing does kind of take funding, so. But as we said, it takes research and getting public input too, because we are, we are very prudent, and we've been very prudent so far, and we want to be very careful and mindful about how we spend the money, so.
Yeah, I mean, we've always been a city that ran kind of lean and mean, so we do want to be cognizant of that.
So let's put that number kind of in that budget as a placeholder, and it's not locking us in, it's not saying we're going to spend it, it's just a placeholder, so.
So Terry had said two hundred thousand, right, so we could put two hundred thousand.
No, sixty.
I think we should go to, I think let's either go to seventy-five or a hundred and then try to work down, you know.
Well, I think, I think because of what we're facing, you know, worldwide and nationwide with inflation and everything, that the more careful we are, I think the less people will be hating us, you know? That's what I'm worried about.
So you want to stay at sixty?
I'm really comfortable with sixty, I know art's expensive, I realize that, but this is the first year we've had any money, let's not, you know, go gung ho and then have everybody mad at us.
That's fine with me, can we go, let's compromise and go to seventy-five?
Yes.
I feel like I'm in an auction. John, if we, if we put seventy-five down on the budget and let's say we spend six months, we get input, and it looks like we need a little more, and we do have the funds, you know, in the bank, so to speak, do we go to the city council and just explain why we want to go a little higher, how does that work?
Yeah, then, and that was a large reason why I suggested earmarking the dollars for next year, because if by, you know, this time in twenty twenty-three, the commission's done the research and says, okay, wait, now it's going to be, you know, two hundred thousand dollars like Terry suggested, I'm kidding, Terry. Then, then we can, you know, the commission can recommend augmenting the budget for that fiscal year. So there's always time, you know, we, we do this as staff, we give it our best estimate as we can, but then once a project comes too close to fruition, we have a better idea, we adjust the budget recommendations as needed and take those to the city council for them to either approve or request other changes as needed.
Okay. So do, do we need a motion on this because it's a higher dollar amount? Or do we just tell you, John, to put seventy-five down?
What I, what I would recommend is, once the commission has a full recommendation, we'll do one motion overall. You know, there's been other suggestions for coming, you know, coming near expenses, the T2 midnight stop, some other projects that the commission.
Farmer's market items.
Other projects the commission may want to do, and so once sort of the full package is together, then taking a motion at that time to recommend it to the city council.
Okay, so probably we'll revisit this next month as well?
Yeah, and what I can do is work with the subcommittee as we put together the report for next commission meeting to include the items that have been discussed thus far.
Okay, and I think one thing we'll also, as a commission, have to decide if we want to do another call for art. We typically do them once every year, year and a half, but we still have a lot of pieces coming in and they haven't come in yet, and they're probably going to come in over the next couple of months, so we may want to hold off on a call for art for a while, for sculptures, for the Art Without Walls, formerly known as the Sculpture Loan Program. So for the subcommittee you would work with, John, which subcommittee would that be? Would that be Janet and myself?
Yeah, that was my, what I was referring to, the one that had been put together to come up with recommendations for the budget.
Okay, so we'll meet with you between now and the next meeting, and you'll correlate all the information we've given you and we'll give you some more feedback before the next meeting, correct? John?
Yes, yes.
Okay, does anyone else have any feedback or comments or ideas for the budget? Terry, it looks like you were going to say something?
No, I'm comfortable, you know, I'm just worried about the economy, but don't worry about me.
And every time I turn on the news, you know, I grind my teeth, so, but we don't, you know, we're going to hope for better days, and we don't know between now and like six months or a year from now what the world's, you know, what's going to go on, so we're going to just.
That's why you have mouth guards.
All right, it's almost eight though, let's wrap it up, I'm just going to be frank.
All right, let's go on to informational items. I've got a couple things that I'd like to see on the next agenda, but I'll take it offline. Hillary, did you, did you have anything on the Two Worlds One Voice as an informational item?
That just was a poetry reading we were going to do, but one of the poets is stuck in China, so we canceled it. So we will, you know, circle back to that at some point, but we're just not going to do it right now, so.
Okay.
No money was spent on that, so.
Okay.
Just time.
Okay, Terry likes that. Do we have any other informational items from any other of the commissioners? Nope, okay, John, do you have anything?
Not beyond what I've already shared throughout the meeting.
I will say, I will say, Terry's got a hand up, and I will say quickly that on the conservation end, I have reached out to some folks about doing art restoration without much luck, but we'll keep working on it.
Is that for?
Some of the pieces that need more work than the city can do, so that's all I'm going to say for right now, just know we're working on it.
Okay.
We did notice that not all of the new sculptures are up on the city's website, not that you don't need anything else on your job list, but FYI.
That was actually one of my things to update the webpages, it was an informational item.
I know you've been working on the housing element, so.
Yeah, I know, I know John's been busy with that.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, if anyone, if anyone else does not have anything, let's call it a day and go eat our dinner.
Sweet.
I'm looking around, I don't see any hands up, let's call it a night.
Thanks for everybody and your hard work.
Thank you.